October 2nd, 2023, Granville County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'd like to start off tonight with Commissioner Tim Karen with our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
If you'll pray with me. Heavenly Father, my prayer tonight is in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Father, as we go through this month of October, I ask a special blessing for all those that are dealing with this horrific disease. I ask that you put a special, special touch on all those families that are dealing with those or those, there's women that are dealing with this in their circles. Father, for the healthcare providers like those at Granville Medical Center, Father, just touch them, be with them, and, and do what you can, Father, with divine intervention, as we celebrate this month of breast cancer awareness and all that is good that you do for us, Father. I ask a special blessing on those who suffer. Amen.
Amen. Will join me for the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna skip number six in our agenda right now. We're waiting on a guest, and then we're gonna go to item seven. Just let me go back, let me step back. Commissioners, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. What's the pleasure, the board?
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cozart.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Jay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now for introductions and recognitions and presentations, we're awaiting on a guest, so we're gonna go to item seven, a cooperative extension presentation. And I think that is Ms. Brown.
Just, okay, okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Jennifer Brown, and I work for the Cooperative Extension Service here in Granville County, as well as Person County. And I do the Family Consumer Science Program, so I'm gonna talk to you just a little bit about that and some of the programs that we've had. As you can see from the, the presentation, my main focus is food, anything and everything to do with food, whether it's food safety, food and nutrition, food preservation, and also how that correlates to overall health and wellness. Cooking for if you have, you know, diabetes or heart disease, teaching people just how to cook, different cooking methods, reading nutrition labels, taking people to the grocery store, and kind of doing a tour around and showing people how to do some of the basic life skills that they might not have gotten. We use a variety of different curriculum. We are housed out of NC State and North Carolina ANC. Those are our two land-grant universities here in the state. So we have a lot of curriculum from those two universities, but we also are connected to all of the other extension offices across the country, as well as resources from the American Diabetes Association, the CDC, wherever we can find curriculum, and I've been trained in a lot of those as well. Again, as I mentioned, I am across-county extension agents. There are four of us in our office working both Person and Granville Counties. That can present some challenges, but we can also just make sure that we are utilizing technology to help us reach our citizens, doing events in, in person, virtual, doing a hybrid thing, working with other extension offices across different districts, regional, and even national collaboratives. And it gives us a little bit of freedom to kind of choose which programs are suiting our audience. We have to be very focused, and we utilize the community health assessment done by the Health Department and other local resources to determine what are the needs in this county. I just wanna briefly go over some programs that we've done this past year and give you kind of an update, as well as maybe some information about them. So one that we did this past year, we did what's called a Get Fit and Lose It program, being that, again, we're, we're across-county. Sometimes we have to look outside for other sources of funding or collaborative partnerships. We reached out to the Triangle North Healthcare Foundation and got some funding to do this program this last year, and it incorporated going out to the community, to the libraries, to the senior centers, to the schools, to teach nutrition, to teach health and wellness, to provide information to people who might be suffering from heart disease or diabetes, so that they can maybe either lose weight or reduce their, their numbers, reduce their cholesterol, their blood pressure, whatnot. We have a, a picture, you know, there that showed a gentleman winning a door prize that was funded by the Triangle Health, North Healthcare Foundation, and we got, we're, we just finished that, so we are collecting surveys and evaluations right now for the data, but we did have a parent that said that her child has been trying new foods and is, is eager to eat a little bit healthier. We did the donation station program. If you're aware, the Stovall Branch Library started a farmer's market in their parking lot earlier in May, and we wanted to partner with them to also help feed people in the community. So we used a curriculum or a program called the Donation Station, where myself and some of our volunteers at the extension office set up a booth, providing information about extension, about health and wellness, but we also collected either money or produce. So people could go around to the, the local vendors and buy produce and donate it to us or give us money, and at the end of the farmer's market day, we would go around and purchase from the vendors. It was able to help the local vendors, you know, financially, but also we took that food, and that was to be donated, to some kind of local food pantry or, you know, agency in need. In this case, we just took it inside to the library, because as I'm sure you're aware, the libraries have a refrigeration unit in them now, the Farm-to-Fridge Program. So it was a very good collaborative partnership that we could collect produce and go ahead and fill their refrigeration units, so that the people of Stovall could actually keep that produce. And we collected $170 and donated 155 pounds of food, only doing about six different donation days throughout the summer. Again, I go wherever I'm requested. I get asked to go to a lot of community events and health fairs in all different parts of the community. Since the county is kind of broad, I get asked, if I get asked to go to one senior center, I'm going to all of the other two. If I get asked to go to one library, I'm going to the other two to do similar-type programs. So I did do that this year, participated and had a lot of booths out there. And then, again, as I mentioned, the senior center workshops, we went and do, did individual workshops throughout the year, but we also did, you know, longer workshops, if they had a series that they wanted to do. We did an eight-week chronic disease self-management program. We did a four-session Dining with Diabetes series. And again, as I mentioned, if one of the senior center gets me there, they, they want the other one. So I try to reach out and make sure that all of the seniors in the community are getting access to these resources, no matter the part of the community that they live in. And we had one participant that actually was able to drop her A1C or her blood sugar down from 8.6 to 7.2 over that four-month time period. And I actually just left our Extension Volunteer Association meeting for the, the quarter. We have a group of about 20 to 30 volunteers. They're kind of our adult 4-H clubs, that they get together and do a variety of projects across the, the county, community service. We've got some dictionaries to donate to, the, the third graders in the community. We help out with the Backpack Buddies. We just provide college scholarships to some students in Granville County as well. So we're doing a lot of projects, and we're also always looking for new resources and new ideas for us to do. And, again, I only focus on the Family Consumer Science Program, but as I mentioned, we have a variety of other extension agents in the county. So we work together as a staff, doing a variety of things. We did a Small Farms Week celebration every March, and we do a canned food drive. And we collected a variety of food, but we were very specific that we were collecting food to go for a specific meal. So we gave them, you know, all of the needed food for this particular meal. I think it was like a chicken soup thing, and the recipe card and all of that stuff, and we worked with the local Sheriff's Department for them to distribute it to the families in need in the community, because they're the ones who know who need it most. We taught some of our younger 4-Hers about cooking skills and etiquette and proper manners and, and all of that. And we were even able to work with our local horticulture agent and his master gardeners to help the cornwall community with their community garden initiative, providing over $1,500 to help purchase plants, garden equipment, and even purchased a shed for them to store all of the tools that we were able to get for them. And that is at the New Gressy Creek Missionary Baptist Church. I think I said that right. So just wanted to give you a little update of some of the impacts and things that we are doing in the community. So that is all I have. If you have any questions or anything.
Commissioners, are there any questions for any members? I just.
I don't have. A, a question, but I do wanna make a statement that I was very honored to be invited to the volunteer dinner the other night, and to get to see all those wonderful volunteers that work with you, and, and know all the different programs that are going on in the county. So thank you again for everything you do and everything at the extension. Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to have you explain to the community and the board a little more detail, the fridge, library fridge.
The Farm-to-Fridge Program? Okay. Well, from what I understand it, we had, the library program had a, I think, AmeriCorps volunteer that was able to write a grant to get funding to put these refrigeration units. I know that they are at the Oxford Library and the Stovall Library and the Creedmore Library, and I think there's hopes to expand that to the Berea Library as well. But it is just a refrigeration unit, and we helped work with the library to make sure that they were connected to possible farms in the community. If any of the farmers have any leftover or extra produce or whatever else maybe they weren't able to sell, or, you know, some people are picky about their produce. If it looks a little funky, they don't wanna buy it, but it tastes perfectly good. So they collect produce from the farmers and put it in the refrigeration unit. And anyone going into the library, whether they're there to get a book or information or whatever, can go into this refrigeration unit and take out whatever produce that they need. And I've also provided recipe cards and information in nutrition at all of the libraries, at the, the tables, because oftentimes people might not know how to cook stuff, so we wanna provide the resources with them. So it's a, it's a fabulous program that they're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Little things like that make Granville County special.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just, I'd be remiss as the liaison in the cooperative extension if I didn't tell you, you're doing an absolutely fantastic job. And if you would, please pass back to Teresa.
I will.
And the rest of your agents, that we appreciate them. We know you're stretched thin, but, in a plug, for those in the audience, if anybody would like to volunteer, we've got lots and lots of programs, and we even appreciate you with a banquet once a year if you're a volunteer at Cooperative Extension. So outstanding work that you do in our community.
Thank you, thank you. We can't do what we do without the support from, from you all, as well as the support of our volunteers. So thank you to each and every one of you, and, you know, again, every month I send, put out a newsletter with the programs that I'm doing, and I know Teresa does one for the overall extension. If for some reason you're not getting that and you want more information, please just let us know. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming tonight. We'll go back to, to item six. We'd like to ask, this is the hearabout legislative and budget update as to the state's budget. Can, Mr. Reavis, can you hear me okay?
Okay, thank you. We'd first like to ask Representative Frank Sossman if he would come and provide us a budget update from his perspective. Mr. Winslow and Senator Bodie will follow. And Dr. Damaris, I will get you soon after. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Let me begin by thanking Chairman May, the Granville County Commissioners, County Manager Drew Cummings and his staff for their hard work, steady communication with me in my office, plus your support in working with me to move forward on projects and legislative matters. It's an honor to serve and represent the people of Granville County and be a voice for your concerns and issues in Raleigh. One thing I can assure you of, and that is the leadership of the General Assembly knows that Granville County exists, and they understand the needs and the assistance Granville County is requesting. Much of that was reflected in the budget appropriations that Representative Matthew Winslow and I had placed in our project request. We were given the maximum of 10 projects. Very, very fortunate to be awarded 11.5 million for Vance-Granville Community College Advanced Manufacturing Training Center. That is a huge appropriation. Now, the appropriation process is a rigorous process, and the budget as well is a rigorous process. You've gotta do a lot of finagling and, the country term, you've gotta do a lot of work. You gotta talk to individuals and appeal to them and make them aware of why this is important. The need is great. Even though you put it in a proposal, you still have to do your homework and meet with chairmans and vice-chairmen. Let me tell you one of the things I did. I tried every kind of trick in the book, every kind of approach in the book. I had one of the chairman to come by my office one day and sat down, and he and I had conversation, and I told him, I said, listen, there's two words. Look at me, two words that I want you to remember. He was staring at, two words, Granville Vance. Granville Vance. I want you to remember those words, so when those projects come across your desk and you see Granville and Vance, you'll say, that's what he's talking about, and you'll approve those, those projects. And then I saw him one day in the hallway, and I said, hey, Granville Vance, Granville Vance. So you have to try to use every trick in the book, but that, that's a huge appropriation, and I'm glad that Vance-Granville has representation here tonight, and they can, they can tell you even more about the history than I can of how many years we've been hoping to catch that. 10 million for the city of Oxford, Car Lake Regional Water. Now, let me tell you a little bit about that. I, that was not on my project list. I had an event in Vance County. A gentleman from Oxford was there. He overheard me talking about projects and didn't hear Oxford listed. He gave me a call and asked me, would I be willing to talk to the, to the mayor of Oxford? I said, sure, we're friends. I'd be glad to talk to her. So she called me, we had conversation, and I said, Jackie, if you'll send me what you have together, even though the deadline's already come for entering projects, all I can be told is no. I'll be glad to submit the projects and advocate for the projects. Well, I submitted what she sent me, and as a result of that, several weeks passed by, and I gave her a call. I said, Mayor, I feel real good about it. I don't have anything official, but I feel real good about this being appropriated. And sure enough, it was in the budget, we approved the budget, and now they're getting $10 million. 5 million for South Granville Water and Sewer. 3 million for Vance-Granville Community College for capital improvements. 2.93 million for Dillon Juvenile Center, and 1 million Granville County Economic Development. 500,000 for the town of Butler for infrastructure study and downtown development, which is also a huge deal that combines with all that they're doing for economic development. It's a huge win for, for Butler. And Jim Rinn certainly helped me with that, as we all lobbied. I'm not a licensed lobbyist, but I, I still have to lobby as a representative. And 250,000 for the city of Creedmore for their city hall renovation and police department that Representative Winslow and myself presented to them tonight. And let me just mention how you are indirectly affected by two other projects. 5 million dollars for Mariah Pram Hospital to take their old ER and upgrade it for some secure beds for mental health patients. Now, that's a huge win for this whole area. When sheriff's deputies or police officers take a mental health patient to a hospital now, they have to stay with them until they are in a secured place, or they have to transport them to a secure place. With these secure beds, they can take the patient to the hospital, they're in a secure room, and they can leave and do their work, which is, again, a big win. It also is gonna cut down on nurses and doctors and staff being assaulted, because they'll be in secure facilities. The general public also has some apprehension when they see mental health patients roaming the ER. So all that's, it's gonna, it's a game changer, really. And then 500,000 dollars for the regional airport for a water line. They have water, a well, but not enough if they'd have a major fire. So that is a huge, huge thing, too, that affects really both counties. And, and really, there's so much of Granville and Vance where you work together. So when, when Vance County wins, Granville County wins. When Granville County wins, Vance County wins. These funds and these funded projects are all made possible through the votes for the budget from representatives and senators in North Carolina. And I wanna publicly thank all the representatives and senators that voted for the budget. It's all their hard work and commitment that's made these projects a reality. I look forward to continuing our work together in Granville County and stand ready to do whatever is possible to see growth, development of infrastructure, and more projects to advance our goals and our objectives. Thank you for this time tonight, and again, thank you for all that you're doing, and thank you for your cooperation and with me and working with me. It takes all of us working together to see good things happen. God bless you. Yeah.
So while you're there, talk about your mental health forum and the forum with broadband and DOT.
When I was elected and sworn in, I was not given a playbook, so I've had to create my own playbook. And some of the things that I'm doing is forums. I have a lot of contact from the public about broadband. And I said, you know, we ought to have a forum so the public can be informed and educated about broadband. They can, and they can ask the experts from Raleigh. So we brought in the experts to Vance. We had a broadband forum there. We had one here in Granville. In October, we'll have transportation forums at 10 o'clock in the morning. Realtors will be, are invited to come, and there'll be, the divisional director is gonna be doing some training and talking also about the roads and the DOT items to Realtors who are on the front line. And then at 3 o'clock, governmental leaders are asked to come also to interact with Brandon Jones and to hear what he has planned for now and in the future, and then you, you'll have the opportunity to talk to him about your concerns. And then at 6, the public forum will take place. And then in November, we're working on putting together, we already have the date set, but we're working on putting together two forums for mental health, bringing all the providers together, having those providers to be present and to present what they do provide, the services they do provide, and then helping the public understand how to access those services. Whenever mental, the mental health department was shut down in every county, we really were not, were not ready for what happened. They subcontracted with different groups to provide mental health services, but nobody knew who they were, nor did they know how to get in touch with them. So we've had chaos for a long, long time. So we're hoping that services are available, that they can understand what those services are and how to access those services. So we, we have a lot of providers that's gonna be there at the forum. There's gonna be a lot of information. They're gonna be held in churches. The one in Granville County is gonna be in Cornerstone Christian Community Church. And, and in the, we'll go to the fellowship hall after the presentation, and there'll be tables set up with different organizations there that will have material that you can take and go, take with you home. So I'm, I'm excited about all the forums, but I'm really excited about transportation and mental health. And then there'll be some more in 2024 that I'll be putting together that is important, education, health, public safety, economic development, et cetera. So I look forward to, to continuing to educate District 32. Thank you for allowing me to comment on those forums. And I also have put together task force, community development, public safety, education, some of the same topics, but local citizens that are part of those task force that will, that's helping me keep a pulse on what's going on and how I can address those issues that are vital to the community's health and well-being.
Thank you, Representative.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank all of you.
Representative Winslow. Good evening.
Do I have your time remaining after Pastor, Representative Frank Sossman?
The floor is yours. You, whatever topic you'd like, if you'd like me to stay in the vein, if you could.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm enjoying working on the budget. I enjoyed working with some of my new friends here in Granville County. One of the things I get to go over this evening is the overall budget items. Representative Sossman, he covered all the individual projects. One of the things I got to announce, let's say, Monday, last week, was that our region, we brought in 157 million dollars in direct funding. I don't, that's, that's, that's something that I don't believe we've ever seen in this area. And I think what it shows you is that what good teamwork and cooperation can do. Directly between Franklin and Granville Counties was 80, 83 million, and then 39 million dollars here in Granville County. So I don't, I don't think, you guys have seen direct funding of 39 million dollars in a long, long time for any, any projects. And so I've enjoyed working on it, enjoyed working with you here locally, with our local elected officials. You made it very clear on what your priorities were, what your expectations, and we worked hard to bring it to you. So let's go through, I wanna go through over the overall budget items. We were able to do a lot of what we're doing because of sound financing and accounting at the state level. In addition to the projects we're bringing here, we've also been able to reduce taxes by another 1.5 billion dollars across the state with continued growth towards a, a tax rate of 3.99% of income and then zero for corporate taxes. We put additional funds in our, into our rainy day fund. It's now over 5 billion dollars, which is more than what the statutory requirement is. In our budget, we've got 7.4% raise for teachers, an additional $2,866 for our local yearly stipend. This is something new. The General Assembly put in our 21, 22 budget, and now in our 23, 24 budget, it's actually an increase from what it was prior. 7% raise for principals and non-certified school staff, 9% raise for bus drivers, 7% raise for state employees, 4% cost-of-living bonus for state retirees, 2.5 billion for North Carolina's transportation system. That is, infrastructure in our area is very important, because how much we're growing and because where we are located in Triangle, investing in our, in our, our roads and infrastructure is a priority for the General Assembly. 2 billion for water and sewer improvements. We, you see this a lot, is that we have a lot of aging systems. We have a lot of new need for Segwassa, for growth, and updating our systems. 1 billion for public school capital projects. This was an increase. They, we more than doubled the amount. This is where you can apply for the older schools. This is only the second time in history that the General Assembly has provided capital financing for projects for schools. We have 21 million dollars for school supplies, 620 million dollars for behavioral mental health programs. Representative Sossman touched on that here locally. We, we see that it's, it's a growing trend, it's something that we need to focus on, so the General Assembly has made it a priority to focus in those areas. 70 million for school safety grants. We've doubled that amount from the year prior. This is for your LEOs and your updates in your schools to make them more safe. 20 million dollars for services and housing for homeless veterans and victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. This is something new that we provided in the, in the budget this year. 14 million for improving broadband at all 47 rural colleges. We have, not just locally, we have our issues in broadband. We also have our community colleges. It's very difficult to learn, as you know, if you can't have high-speed internet. Investments in public safety. For example, we have 2 million dollars to replace and update the state crime lab and equipment. And something that, I don't know if many people picked up in the budget, we put 125,000 dollars in there for a study if to privatize the Department of Motor Vehicles. This is a growing trend. We hear over and over again, everyone's frustrated with DMV. I have made it my passion and my drive to work on DMV to improve the systems. In fact, my son, he's, he just turned 16, and we took five trips to DMV before we actually got an appointment and to license over about a four-and-a-half-week time period. My wife was like, why are we standing for this? Why are we doing this? And I said, yes, ma'am, I agree, but we need to go through this process, and we need to deal with it. And so I was excited that we were able to put that in there to do the study for the privation of a DMV. So I'm here for any questions. I've enjoyed working with you through the budget process, and thank you for letting us speak tonight.
Any Commissioners have any questions?
I have a question. The LEO money for schools in, every two years, and so will that additional funding be available now for our, for our schools can, that did not get fully funded for SROs, or are they gonna have to wait another year?
No, as soon as the budget becomes adopted and the funds are distributed, so the Office of State Budget Management has to distribute those funds to the different state departments. This will be through DPI, and once they do, then you have the availability to apply for them.
So DPI is advised?
So DPI has advised us that our school system that, because I want to make sure, Matt, that maybe you can, Representative Winslow, maybe you can contact Dr. Winborn. Their understanding is, is that that is only a two-year cycle and that we are, we've got like four and a half, am I right? Mr. Cummings, four and a half that are paid for by the county SROs. And, and so we can't get that. Go ahead.
So I was going to say, are you talking about SROs for schools or?
Yeah, SROs for the schools.
Right, but for middle and elementary schools?
Yes.
Because it's different sizes than in middle school and elementary.
Okay. We'll talk about.
As always, we're, we're your boots on the ground. Any questions you have that we can't answer ourselves, we have great staff that can help you.
Okay, good. So I'm just going to refer the schools back to, to your office and let them work through the details because it sounds like there's going to be some additional funding available.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you so much for letting us present tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for answering questions.
I had to ultimately go to our DMV, our DMV in Granville County. That DMV needs some upkeep. It looks like the paint on it, it's been over there ever since I went, I got my license, but back, back in my teenage years. It really needs some work done too, and upkeep is going to. It just, I was, I can't, I don't know who to, who to talk to about that. When I talk to you, I just want to ask you, but can we do something about the upkeep? Maybe something, building up there, the floors and, and the painting of, of that DMV.
I can't answer that question directly, but I do receive funds for capital improvements and updates and maintenance. And so what we can do is we can sort of check into it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Winslow.
Thank you.
Senator Bodie.
I would just like the record to reflect that all DMV-related issues should go to Representative Winslow. He has cornered that market as directed by his wife to do so. So just let the record reflect that. It is an honor to be standing here before you all tonight to share the good news. It's been a privilege to work alongside Granville County House members and with each one of you all, as well as our local municipalities, to bring good projects back to Granville County. And I just, a lot of, a lot of the information has already been shared very succinctly by Representative Winslow and Sossman. But there are a couple other kind of overview points on the budget that I want to hit as I think they relate to Granville County. And then I want to talk about some of the projects we didn't get and maybe how we can, you know, with the funding allocations and the buckets that are out there, how we can make sure that Granville County is well-positioned for those opportunities in the future. So overall, I think was mentioned, the budget for the biennium spends about $60 billion, about $30 billion in 2024, or 2023, rather, and then $30 billion in 2024. State employees, of which there are many in Granville County, will see an across-the-board increase in 4% this fiscal year and 3% next fiscal year. Plus, as Representative Winslow mentioned, many of our retirees who reside in Granville County will get a one-time cost-of-living adjustment bonus of 4%. Teacher pay, there, there are a lot of different numbers kind of floating out there on teacher pay, and it's, it's much more complicated than an average salary increase. I had the opportunity to sit down with our fiscal staff for about two and a half hours today to really break down the numbers. We're basically seeing an average teacher salary increase of 4% this next fiscal year, but that is an average. And if teachers have between 0 and 15 years of experience, we will see a bit of a higher increase than that. And for our veteran teachers, we will see less of an increase than that, as, as was kind of the priority of the budget this year to recruit new teachers and fill the teaching gap that we're seeing in our public education system. I think Representative Winslow also mentioned the supplemental assistance allotment, which increased about $350 for Granville County teachers as a total of about $2,866. On transportation, as was mentioned, a big issue here, we're seeing about a 20% increase in the budget, in the base budget, which totals about $758 million. I am very hopeful that Granville County, in my portion of Wake County, can get a slice of that. And then I think one of the big pieces we, we haven't had an opportunity to really talk about is healthcare. So with the expansion of Medicaid this year, we have what's called the American Rescue Plan Act Temporary Savings Fund, which was a signing bonus of approximately $1.6 to $1.7 billion that will be spent in North Carolina over the next eight fiscal quarters. $1.4 billion has been allocated for healthcare-related projects like the North Carolina Initiative, which improves access to high-quality healthcare for rural areas like Granville County, an amount of $420 million. Community college capital projects with a focus on healthcare and health sciences for $320 million. And health and mental health projects of around $400 million, and 70 million for rural health initiatives. So that's an incredible kind of once-in-a-lifetime investment that's being made over this next biennium. And alongside with that, with Medicaid expansion, you may have heard of the HASP program. So North Carolina hospitals and health systems, like Granville Health System, will receive in total up to $1.8 billion in federal money to improve access for Medicaid patients. This program essentially allows the federal government to reimburse hospitals at a higher rate closer to the cost of care. And many of our rural hospitals are in desperate need of that HASP money. So very excited to see that being deployed out. I think Representative Sossman also mentioned the $5 million that will go to Mariah Param, which she is absolutely right about. Our entire region and community will feel the positive impacts of that. But also, each public health department in our state will get $50,000 in each fiscal year, 2023 and 2024, from that American Rescue Plan Act. So certainly wanted to highlight that. So I, I mentioned some of the other local Granville County projects that, that didn't get funded in this, in this budget. The School Maintenance Fund. Granville County asked for about $15 million for, for school maintenance and capital, and infrastructure capital. As Representative Winslow mentioned, this budget allocates a significant amount of resources to help rural counties meet some of those needs and those costs, which historically in North Carolina have been the responsibilities of the counties. But really, this budget steps into that, to that gap to help make sure that we're taking care of our school and school infrastructure. I did want to note that this budget removes the Opportunity Scholarship cap, and as a result, Granville County is projected to lose about 2% of its state funding in fiscal year 2026, 2027, which amounts to approximately $950,000. We mentioned school resource officers. I know that's been a priority, especially for you, Chairman May, which is why I asked if it was, if you were more focused on middle and elementary schools or high schools. I'm happy to work with our delegation to help answer that question because $35 million was appropriated in this budget for that, as, as well as for school safety grants, which I know has been a priority of the Granville County Board of Education as well. I think the other, the other big item, the big ask, was New Commerce Drive extension, which, which we asked for about $10 million for, and I'm hopeful that that 20% increase in base budget allocation for, for NC DOT, that Granville County can get a slice of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions and just really appreciate the productive and collaborative working relationship.
Any commissioners have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I want to tell you all that I've been in this seat, well, all these seats, but in this seat for seven years now. And this is the first time that we have seen representatives and the senator come let us know about the budget. And I'm so very proud of the three of you. I have seen more of you all than I've seen of my husband this last few years. So thank you very much for everything you've done, and, and I'm just so very proud of the three of you. Thank you very much for everything.
Sure, absolutely. And I'm, I kind of created a general overview and a specific overview I'm, I'm happy to share with the board as well, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate our legislative delegation, and just want to say to you, I appreciate your accessibility. And also, from a personal note, I'm just so encouraged with what I see in the teamwork among you. I want to thank you for that.
I'd like to say the same thing, that I think working across aisles really has benefited Granville, Franklin, and Vance County. I've gotten to know Representative Sossman really well, and I enjoyed the forum the other night. I thought it was well-attended. It was definitely lively, and, you know, I think it was very well-received by the community. I know my district doesn't have a lot of broadband, so they appreciate it, and I appreciate the accessibility of all three.
I just like to thank you all. Thank you for all the work you put in, for all this, thank you for spending time with us. Thankfully, I've spent a little more time with my wife than I have with you guys, so I'm not in the doghouse. But it's been a pleasure meeting and working with all of y'all. Thank you so much for what you do.
I just like to say thank you. Representative Bodie, you said something about a health department, about money for health department?
Yes, about, yes. So about $50,000 is going to each, each health department across the state this fiscal, this fiscal year and next fiscal year from that American Rescue Plan. The signing vote is from Medicaid expansion of one point, I guess, between $1.6, $1.7 billion that has to be spent over the next eight quarters, a piece of that. And I'm, I'm happy to send you the, the, kind of, the line item in the budget to that. Yeah, absolutely. Sure.
Before they finish, Dr. Damaris, could you come down, please? Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for coming.
Thank you for the invitation. I am a lot shorter than these previous folks here. I think someone asked, how long had we been at this trying to envision and build an advanced manufacturing center in this area to support economic and workforce development? And the answer is seven years, the entire time you have been on this particular board. And I just want to say that you have to get in the game to play it.
That's right.
And I just want to give my personal thanks to you, Representative Sossman, for actually filing a bill specifically for this to get us noticed. And I want to thank, of course, Representative Winslow for supporting that, but also Senator Bodie. I mean, it was just so heartwarming to see the bipartisan support for this. But I couldn't have gone to them if it hadn't been for you all. Because, you know, we had to have skin in the game. And I think we had a powerful story when I went to these folks, the delegation sitting behind me, to say, we already have skin in the game. And we, we could do that because of your generosity and because of my board's support as well. And so Granville County Economic Development, Triangle North Board, and the Car-Tar Council of Governments joined aside, joined to set aside approximately 15 acres in the Triangle North Park for this project. And then you all allocated money towards this, as did the Board of Trustees out of their state SCIF funds. The center is going to support industry training needs in the areas of industrial maintenance, mechatronics, electronics, welding, fabrication. It will also serve as an advanced manufacturing company recruitment benefit, which I think will be very important based on the plans for the park that you all have economic development-wise. And it's going to support collaborative high school and college career and technical education partnerships. It's going to help us modernize what we do. It's going to put an emphasis on trades, which I think is extremely important. We are starving in this region for people pursuing trades. I'm famous for saying, not only is four-year college not for everyone, neither is a two-year degree for everyone. We have plenty, yes, I said that, because we have plenty of jobs here and opportunities that need skills training and smaller credentials that are worth value. And we love diversity, diversity of employment, the diversity of paths that people choose is important to us at Vance Granville. And right now, speed to work, to the employment, speed to employment is extremely critical for North Carolina to remain number one in business. We absolutely must get people into the workforce, get them trained and realigned to the workforce we have, and this center is going to help us do that. I would like to tell you that 30% of Vance Granville students are from Granville County. You now represent the largest portion, students from Granville County, of any other county in our service area. Just to compare with the next one is 22%, is Vance. So these are your students here from your county that live here, and I just think that's important for you to know. And I think an investment of this magnitude, it's going to send a powerful message to current, future manufacturing stakeholders that our region values the manufacturing sector, we support growth and innovation, and we believe in employee value. So I just want to thank you again for helping us be able to accomplish our mission and vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Damaris. Does any commissioner have any questions for Dr. Damaris?
I do. Thank you, Dr. Damaris, for sticking with it for seven years. And I've only been here five.
I know.
I jumped right in.
With that, we thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to just make a few comments if I could. First of all, it is a pleasure working with our delegation, and we, we've done everything from try to get SROs to school money to manufacturing development center and presenting a silver star to a family of a lost veteran. And it's amazing that you cannot achieve these type of things unless you engage, and engage at this level and have the constant interaction with this level. So very important that our legislators understand the pulse of the county and the needs of the county, and that comes from this board and it comes from the county leadership. I'd also like to thank our taxpayers. They, they placed money on the line that entered, that got us in the game. And they also allowed us funding for lobbyists. And I know we don't like to talk about that, but that's a fact. And it's a good fact because you have to engage and have to continue to engage if you're seeking to compete with other counties and other, other areas of the, of the country. And that team of Smith, Anderson, including Dana Simpson and our county attorney, Jim Ren, I appreciate them for their efforts and their leadership that they provided in that process. They don't like attention, but it's part of a process, and it's understanding that the, the members of the public need to understand that that's, that was money well-spent to, to pursue that and to provide the guidance and the expertise and their interaction with the, the full body, if you will, to, to achieve this. So Frank, Matt, and Mary, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. Dr. Damaris, thank you for your vision. And the board, I thank you. And the board, I thank you for your eagerness about two years ago to get this launched, as far as that goes. And the further, further big things, I believe that this will set Granville County on a trajectory that, from workforce development and, and from Triangle North in a, a direction that we've not seen before, and, and we're looking for big things. So, thank you. Our next item. Public comments. Does anybody would like to make any? Mr. Hart, would you like, John? Would you like to make a comment? I'm sorry. This is the airport administrator, if you will. And I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
That's fine. I'm John Carver. I serve at your pleasure on the Airport Authority. And it's a pleasure for me to be here today to tell you that we were contacted by Representative Sossman. And we haven't been contacted by any other representative since I've, I've been on the board, so I was amazed. But he met with us, he asked us about what our needs were, and he listened. And I'm going to tell you, he's a man of his word, and he's a man of action. So, thank you very much for giving the appropriation for what is $500,000 for the water line out to the airport, very important for the airport infrastructure. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Thanks for talking with us tonight. If we could now, the purpose of this is to hold a public hearing, and this is Ms. May, hold a public hearing on NC DOT 53010 transportation grant application for funding during the fiscal year 2024 and '25. I declare this a public meeting open. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kathy May of Senior Services, Director for a Brief Overview.
Good evening. We've been receiving the North Carolina DOT 5310 grant each year since 2010. It's funded through federal and state funds, and our local 10% match is met through the ROP, Rural Operating Assistance Program funding that the county receives each year through DOT. The public hearing tonight is for the '24-'25 fiscal year. This grant allows us to purchase service from Carts to have a fixed bus route in the city limits of Oxford, which makes 17 stops per hour. It begins at 8:00 AM at the Granville County Senior Center each morning, and from there makes its way to nine senior housing developments, two grocery stores, two pharmacies, our local hospital, which has doctors' offices all around, the post office, and the Duke Primary Care Doctor's Office. The idea behind a fixed bus route is for the individual to get on the van at a stop that's closest to them, and then off at another stop that's within walking distance of where they want to go. This last fiscal year, this service provided 9,614 one-way trips to our citizens. I do want to let you know that we have updated the resolution that you previously received in your packet. The one in your packet had the prior county manager's name, so that has been updated since you got your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. May. Is there anyone wishing to speak or come forward to the podium to state your name and your address regarding this matter? Does the board have any questions? Excuse me. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Your name and your address, please.
Taisha Hewitt, 123 Oak Road, Butner. I would just like to support Ms. May's request, as the service is very beneficial to several individuals who I come in contact with daily, monthly, and several other relatives and people who I assist on a daily basis as well.
Thank you. And thank you for coming forward, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Yes. Mr. Williford.
Kathy, I've noticed that the Carts park across the street. They, they park, the buses park across at the old Hardee's. Is that an issue?
No, we, I, I don't think so. They do that. That's, that's a Carts thing. That's not a, that's not the, this bus that does that. But they're doing that to wait for dispatch, to dispatch them to different areas. That seems to be a, just a location, and we have asked them not to take a bi-parking basis, so that's what they do.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioner have a question for Ms. May? If not, to declare this public hearing closed. Does the board need any clarification on any motion? I will read this. The Senior Service Director, Ms. Kathy May, recommends after holding a public hearing adopting associate, the associated resolution. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, Chairman, I'll promote that we accept their recommendation, come from Ms. Kathy May, and for the resolution.
Mr. Jay's motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Williford's second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. May. Before, before we move on to the next topic, you know, you probably can probably quote me on this, Mrs. May, because I ask the question every time. But we did reach out to Campo, and, and they're actually gathering up some information right now to get back with the county manager, because we would like to see, and, and they're actually reaching back to Carts and some other folks. We really would like to see this service expanded to both Butner and Creedmore. And we understand that there's limitations based upon the grant because of the population. But we are hoping by working with these organizations that we can find a way to do that. So, I don't want to throw more work on you, but I'm hoping that that meeting will happen soon, and at least we'll be, have, have some idea on what the possibilities may be, or, or there are no possibilities. But we, for the citizens in Southern Granville, please know that one of the obstacles is, is I think the, you must have at least 10,000 residents, I believe, in the city, and we don't have that per city. And so, Ms. May keeps us abreast, and I know that when we, that becomes available, that she will do what she can to do that. But we are continuing to pursue other opportunities if possible. And I do know the director, Drew, actually made email contact with the director of, of Carts as well. So, we want to, again, we're trying to expand the services if at all possible, and do want the public to know that, that we're aware of that, and it's something that we, we do have our eye on. And any opportunities we can to enhance services, we will do so. With that being said, I'll move on to the next item. Okay, thank you. Bear with me. Mr. Brain, if you would, present your information tonight on the Granville Expo Center AV upgrade recommendation.
Thank you, Chairman May. Good evening, board. The Information Technology Department is seeking authorization to negotiate a service contract for the design and implementation of the Granville County Expo Center next-generation audiovisual system. In September of this year, the Information Technology Department issued a request for proposals to design and implement the next-generation audiovisual technology for this Expo Center. The key scope requirements included upgrade the video system to support modern, high-definition hardware connection, connections, and optimized video and, and text content. Upgrade the audio system to a digital system allowing for one-button presets and HD audio quality within the auditorium and the meeting room. And to install a high-definition camera system to support recording and/or live streaming of public meetings. The vendor proposals received by the deadline are listed below, and those vendors are Custom Lights and Sounds, BIS Digital, and Sharp. Myself contacted vendors, references, and perform on-site visits at the city of Meben, which is a customer of Sharp, and the North Carolina General Assembly, which is a customer of Custom Lights and Sounds. To evaluate equipment and quality of the installation, through this evaluation process, Custom Lights and Sounds was determined to be the preferred bidder that best fits the needs for Granville County. It is my recommendation with the support of the county manager to, to negotiate with Custom Lights and Sounds for a proposal to deliver modifications that best align with Granville County's goals for this project, and recommend approving authorization of the county manager to finalize and execute that contract. Partial funding is available in this fiscal year, '23-'24 as well. I can answer any questions.
How much of that partial funding do you have? I'm just curious. It's there, right? And it's, we do have some, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Board, is there any questions regarding this, or anything that any board member would like to speak to on, on behalf of this? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll offer a motion that we accept the IT Director's request and work with the county management to negotiate with Light and Sound for a proposal to deliver modifications that best align with Granville County's goals on this project.
Motion by Commissioner Cairn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Williford. Any further discussion? So, I just want to make sure the board understands that by committing to this, that means that we will be live-streaming our meetings, and we'll be providing this information to the public where they can watch the, the meetings and so forth outside of this building. In addition, there'll be a, a number of audiovisual modifications and upgrades and, and new things placed here to modernize our ability to provide the public with a more visual and, and informative way of, of, of our meetings.
I, I just have one comment. I, I just feel that this is something that we could be using this money to give to our employees, and I don't feel that, that I, this is a necessity.
Okay. So, Ms., any other points of discussion? We have a second and a first. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And opposed by Ms. Himmelt. Motion carries six to one for the audiovisual. Thank you, Mr. Brain. Is any other questions or concerns? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Rivas, please.
Uh, this is Homeland Security Grant Opportunity.
So, thank you, Chairman May, fellow commissioners. I'm here tonight to bring to you to consider accepting Homeland Security Grant sub-recipient award in the amount of $246,550. And this would authorize North Carolina Emergency Management to conduct activities on behalf of the counties within North Carolina, in accordance with the grant requirements. So, this is a grant, very, this is the exact same grant that we did last year, same format. So, this is basically would authorize the grant funds to be provided to the State of North Carolina Department of Public Safety, which is emergency management falls under. So, and they are allowed to conduct, you know, plannings for events, they make purchases, training, fun exercises throughout the state for a period of performance of September the 1st, '23 through '26. You know, also in accordance with the grant guidelines. Again, this is something we've done in the past. This is also something that we've been able to receive funds back through, through the State of North Carolina Emergency Management. And, for example, the la, last one we did was the shelter exercise. That whole exercise was funded through this part. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any commissioner have any question for Mr. Rivas regarding this generator?
One of the things, the key part I did forget, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, planning.
As, as a sub-recipient of this, it, it is completely managed by the State of North Carolina from beginning to end. And we just, you know, we'll get the copies of everything as being the sub-recipient.
The recommendation, Emergency Management Director recommends accepting Homeland Security Grant Program award and authorize in the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management to manage the grant and expend the funds in accordance with grant guidelines. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I think we've done this in the past, and I haven't heard of any problems. So, with that in mind, I move that we approve the recommendation coming from Mr. Rivas.
Second. Dr. Kozart with a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, didn't hear you, Mr. Jay. Second by Mr. Jay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, please.
And this is request to consider awarding a fixed-price contract for engineering services needed for a block grant generator award.
Thank you, Chairman May, Granville County Commissioners. As noted, this request is considered as awarding a fixed-price contract for engineering services for the expo generator. This past June, Granville County was notified of an award for a capacity-building competitive grant to install 180-kilowatt standby generator and automatic power transfer switch for the Granville County Conference and Expo Center. The $248,550 grant is non-matching. However, services needed to design the interconnectivity of the generator to the building's electrical system and provide professional guidance in preparing the request for proposals to acquire the generator and supporting electrical infrastructure is not included in the grant award. Attached to this request is a proposal from Killian Engineering in the amount of $17,500 for the services indicated above. This request complies with Section 5 Architectural Engineering Surveying Services of our county contract and purchasing policy. There is money available in this fiscal year to accommodate this request. And it's my recommendation that we first exempt ourselves from North Carolina General Statute 143, 64 dot 31, by, which is basically the Mini Books Act, which requires requests for qualification-based proposals when hiring engineering firms. For the exemption is the fees are, are less than $50,000, an award in the fixed-price engineering service contract to Killian Engineering in an amount not to exceed $17,500. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if I can, or if there's any kind of, anything about the grant-specific. Jason Rivas is here.
Mr. Williford. Couple of questions, Mr. Phillips. So, over here on the other side, these are just, they're going to do the electrical, electrical design, the bid, they're going to oversee the bid process, and then the construction administration.
Yes.
That's what we're paying for. Now, is it going to be a natural gas? Do we have natural gas running through here?
We don't have natural gas here.
So, it'd be propane?
Right now, it's going to be diesel.
It's going to be diesel. What, what size?
With a size generator that size, diesel's about the only way you can go, because you lose so much power. If you would put propane in, you'd have to have twice the size of a generator.
What size diesel tank will we have here?
I don't know. Probably 150-gallon tank, at least. Usually it's mounted at the underbelly of the generator.
Okay.
It's self-contained.
It's going to be self-contained.
It would run the facility for days.
Okay. How many days?
Several days.
Okay.
And board, this, this generator itself is non-matching, which means we don't apply. It, it, we are, we are obtaining a generator, and we're investing $17,000 for a $250,000 generator. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, congratulations to all we had in the hand in writing the grant. And also, we need to hook it up now and get it going. So, I move to approve the recommendation, just as Mr. Phillips. So I move to approve the recommendation, just as Mr. Phillips has it written in our agenda packet.
I'll second that.
Dr. Kozart and Mr. Willoughby with a second. Any further, all in favor? Any further discussion? All opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Mr. Phillips, while you're there, I mentioned this to Mr. Cummings, but I just want to get it on the record here. So when we're looking at this, the center out north, I'm hoping that we will look also at a generator.
We are.
At the onset, so that we are not, again, that will be providing a, this will be providing, if I'm correct, Mr. Rivas, a shelter. And then that too, as a multipurpose facility, could provide also a generator.
That's the direction I've given to Architect Engineer.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, County Manager. Sheriff Fountain, sir. This is renewal of a consulting contract. Sheriff Fountain.
First giving honor to God and everything that he does, the author of creative finish of my life. Thank you for this opportunity, Chair, board members. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank my staff today, after two years. Our Criminal Investigation Division took into custody a young man, Mr. Byrd, who had killed somebody on 10/16 of 2021 as a juvenile. Craig Williams and the rest of our team never stopped to bring justice or closure to this family. Today, we took him into custody. I would like to thank Ed Newman, who is overseeing our school resource officer program, where we have resource officers, and, well, not resource officers particularly, we have individuals serving security, protecting our schools at every school in this county. And we're doing it without a lot of budgetary increases, but we do have some overtime that's been associated with it. And last week, the United States Marshals and the Bureau of Prisons conducted another jail inspection for our facility, which, again, was very, very well-received. They were well-received in what we did and what we're doing, and they will allow us to continue to house federal inmates. So at the present, we are housing approximately 12 is our goal to get to 20. That will help generate more revenue for our county to pay off the debt. So I'd like to thank my staff for those things that they are accomplishing. And we also took into custody a man Friday night, if I'm not mistaken, at the Grahamville Central Football Game. An adult showed up with a semi-automatic shotgun, some drugs, and some other items. And with our partnership with ALE, we were able to take him into custody Friday night at the homecoming game at Grahamville Central High School. So, we're working. In reference to the contract for Mr. Rob Bayless and the Bayless Consulting Firm, Mr. Bayless was hired as a consultant, I think, a couple of years ago, when we were looking at the asset forfeiture program and some other operational issues at Sheriff's Office. Since that time, Mr. Bayless has been a key and critical part of what we do in the asset forfeiture program, working with Ms. Hagie, working with finance, working with our commissioners, working with Drew, working with county attorney, to ensure that we are going and traveling in the right direction. So Mr. Bayless, and I bring you a request for his contract to be renewed, I think July 2023, and it'll run to June 30th of 2024. The amount of that contract, I think, is in the neighborhood of 70,000, 74,000 projected hours or 1,000 hours, at $74,000. $60,000 of that fund are in our contract already. I will look at it as we get closer to the end of the year, managing his budget and his hours, to see where if I need to use any lapse salaries or any other funding to accommodate the completion of his contract, or just manage his hours to where we reach around 60, and then I'll determine what decision I need to make and bring that to you for your consideration as well. So I would ask to move forward with continuing to keep Mr. Rob Bayless and his consulting firm as an asset to the Grahamville County Sheriff's Office.
One question. So how long do you expect to need to keep him onboard?
What we're doing now, I think next year, due this year, because he's going to help with the accreditation process that we're working on with the county manager, since we don't have any contacts with the other individual that was supposed to have been doing that. So Mr. Bayless is going to work with Chief Lynette Clements, and we have a $40,000 grant that we are going to utilize with accreditation. So he's going to help us work through that process, and once, I'm pretty confident in where we are as far as the dollars and cents of what we're doing, then I'll reevaluate his contract if we need it moving forward. Because I'm not going to waste your money, my money, the taxpayers' money on things that don't benefit this agency or this county.
That's right, because that money could go toward your deputies, so yes.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I'd like to, just to clear up, you have $60,000 already
Yes.
set aside, so you'll manage, once you get closer, you'll see what his hours are, whether or not there's going to be a need for another 10,000 or so?
Yes, sir, it'll be 14, I think.
I'm sorry, you're right, 14, 74,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another question concerning the housing prisoners. Your goal was 20, we're at 12, is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir.
So, they contract, and this may be a question for the county manager or yourself, they contract out, so it's like they reserve 12 beds. They pay for those whether they're being used or not, is that correct?
No. The new contract, in fact, we're working on it now, they're being paid somewhere in the neighborhood of $73 per inmate per day that's in that pod. So what we're trying to accomplish is a rate of $120 a day per bed, and that pod is designated for the feds only. So because we don't want any lawsuits with federal inmates and our county inmates being mixed, I have to designate a pod for them to be in. That was the other reason they came and did the inspection, to see if we were going to be compliant to House 24. So the projection of what the contract that I'm proposing to them is at 100 to 20, $125. I don't care if it's one inmate or 20 in there, they pay us for the 20.
That's my question.
Yes, sir.
So they would reserve those pods that we get paid for, whether there's someone in there or not?
Yes, sir. That's the way we've got to go with the new contract. I've been to Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, been to Pitt County, I'm going to other jails that house federal inmates to see what their contracts look like. Mecklenburg County was housing 1,200 inmates at $193 a day at one time. They cut them loose, but since our location is close to Butner and a federal prison is there, the feds, US Marshal Glenn McNeil came and ate lunch with us, and I remind you guys, every last Thursday of the month, I feed everybody. But they came, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, is get a rate, because we want to be the hub for the federal prison systems of adjudicated inmates. They will be in that pod, and they will move them to their location, which is Butner, upon them finding bed space for them somewhere in the United States. So we will get paid for our transportation at $47 per hour. If they go to the federal courthouse in Raleigh, we get paid for the transport, all that money goes back into the general fund. None of it comes to us specifically.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
From a jail perspective, your detention officer staffing, is that, do you have this staffing at full capacity?
Well, I think we're at 86% right now. We're still hiring, aggressively recruiting on both sides of the house. We have the ability to house those inmates, and it won't create any security, safety issues, or sanitation issues, because that's the three things that we kind of have built our reputation on. And I would ask anybody that's a county commissioner that wants to come into our facility, the safety, sanitation, and security of our facility is above none. We've had a jail inspection by Halifax County, we've had Warren County come in, we've had the feds come in, because of the fact, what I want to do is make sure that anybody says anything about our facility, that we can stand on what we're doing. And that's the reason, I'm waiting for Durham County to come in and do an inspection as well, because I want to keep our people on their toes. I want to make sure they're doing the right things, and we don't have any issues about anything. And that's why Mr. Bayless is key and critical to help us with the accreditation of ACA, the American Correctional Association, and with CLIA. And as we move forward, working with Drew to get the accreditation kind of moving forward. And our Power DMS is up now, moving forward with that. So, the jail staff, we're good.
So you have the staffing to take on the additional inmates without any security or safety or sanitation issues?
Yes, sir.
And where are we with the accreditation at this point?
I terminated the contract with a former person that was doing it.
Not the jail, law enforcement operator?
Both sides, he was doing both.
Okay.
So, everything that we have in Power DMS now, our policies and procedures are there. Now we have to get through and make sure that we tie things up. And I think we got a $40,000 grant, Drew, if I'm correct, that we worked on or have, that that person is going to work with, Terry Hobgood, am I mistaken? The Bayless we're talking about, that's in the
That's the gems grant from the Governor's Crime Commission?
Yes. So, we're going to have a person come in, and we're going to make sure that someone from the outside does the accreditation the right way, and not take a personal interest in what goes on, like they're the jail administrator. I think we need somebody a little more professional in delivery of what they were doing.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Cummings, I know in the recent legislation, North Carolina Legislature just passed some legislation on funding for CLIA. Are you talking about that, or are you talking about a previous grant?
I don't think we're talking about that funding, but I assume that we would be looking into any available sources of funding to help with accreditation costs.
So there was funding placed in the most recent legislation for, specifically for CLIA. That would, I believe, benefit the county, and of course, would soon hopefully be bringing on the grant writer that can assist along with that. Any other questions from the board? Board, before, the recommendation of the sheriff is that the board approve the contract retained to service of Robert Bayless during this fiscal year, fiscal year 2324. And then, the agreement has been looked at both the county, and let me, I'd like to read this statement to you, board, so you understand what in fact you are voting on. "The board has approved the contract that has been sufficiently reviewed by the county manager and attorney, is compliant with the standard contractual requirements. Therefore, the contract can be executed. Funding is within the sheriff's annual budget to cover the cost of this consultant service, and is within the authority of the sheriff for such services." Funding these such services. So you're basically approving a contract, but the funding is already present with the sheriff to be spent at his, based on his authority. Mr. Wren, any concerns with the contract, or any issues, or anything that we need to be aware of?
No, I think you're basically voting on the procurement process, the monies are within the sheriff's budget, and it's his to move forward with it.
What is the pleasure of the board?
With Chairman, I'll motion that we accept the recommendation come from our sheriff and board for the septic.
Mr. J with the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Willoughby, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff, I'd like to take the time to thank the sheriff's office for all the work they're doing, and for the men and women in the sheriff's office, thank you for putting your lives on the line for us on a daily basis, it's most appreciated. Thank you very much. I think we have another item for you.
The next item is the purchase of body armor. We currently went through and started looking at our body armor and asked, and where they expect expiration of those vests were. And we did a study and looked at some information, and it showed that 76% of people who were shot, or officers who were shot, wore body armor, shot in the torso. So it is my recommendation that we spend, I think it's 38, yeah, $38,443 to outfit our deputies with new body armors and tactical vests. With that, $12,917 will come back to us from the Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. So, I'm asking for the first initial $38,000 to purchase these bulletproof vests from Lawman's, which is a reputable dealer throughout North Carolina. And then, that money will go back in, $12,900 go back into the general fund or into our fund balance as we move forward. This money is coming out of our treasury account. Asset forfeiture Fund that's in our budget, right now, we're sitting around $84,000 that's already there, and we actually utilize those funds. Excuse me, we have a remaining balance of $31,000 after we purchase the body armor out of there.
Sheriff, with that reimbursement, would that come back to the general fund, or would that be required to go back into the treasury fund?
Goes back into the treasury asset forfeiture fund.
Okay. Sheriff recommends approval of the purchase of the protective equipment in the amount of $38,443.08 utilizing U.S. Treasury Asset Forfeiture Funds. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, it's always good to be able to do something to help protect our law enforcement, I move for approval of the sheriff's request.
Second.
Dr. Kozart with a motion, who seconded it? Commissioner Gooch. Any other comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff Fountain?
Yes, sir.
Where does that put you in regards to your overall inventory of vest? Are we approaching any other expiration date shelf life in any vest, or anything of that nature? Are we up to speed, in other words?
We're up to speed. They already started coming in, some came in that we use other sources for, but to get everybody outfitted with these new ones, that's going to be the 38, and that'll be everybody that we have. Some of the ones that are not expired, we will put those in the armory to utilize those as spares for somebody may get trash one, or somebody comes in and we need more, or we will transfer them to our transportation officers in the detention facility based on the size of that individual. So if we can get new carriers and the plates are good, we will use those as for the detention officers as well. So anything that we still have, we're going to use those until they expire.
Right, so we are tracking expiration dates and rollover periods, and so we're, at this point, we're in good shape as far as, from a budget standpoint, also from a protective standpoint, no, no, no risk of any deputy wearing a vest that is in need of a vest?
No, sir. No, sir.
Is it mandatory that all your deputies wear vests?
Yes. If they're out patrol guys, the only people that don't wear them will be your investigators, but anyone else, the, anytime they go out to the field, initiate calls, any traffic stops, they all require to wear their vests.
Everyone's issued one?
Everyone's issued one.
Okay.
I got one, too.
All right, well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we didn't have anything out there that rolling up on us, and it looks like you've got the asset forfeiture money that you need to cover it as well, so thank you very much.
Lastly, we will be getting a check for around $120,000. Earlier this year, we did a search warrant on Highway 96 of Mr. Dylan Huff. He pled guilty to five counts, felony counts, when people thought it was hemp, it was all marijuana. So he pled guilty to five counts, felony counts, $320,000 tax bill, of that $320,000, we will get 33% of that coming back from the Department of Revenue in the next 30 days as well. So we will replenish some of the monies that we spend with some of the operations that we're conducting, and we're not finished. So we're moving forward.
Sheriff, I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman. I don't have the chairman's knowledge of law enforcement or yours.
It's probably a good thing.
When you say expiration, how long does, I mean, does it, how long does a vest last?
It depends, most of them you've got five years.
Okay.
So you can get something with metal plates in it, that has, like the carriers, most time, you can catch five years on them, but you get metal plates, you can extend the life, but it's a company thing. The higher you spend the money, or what vest level your expiration date may be different. But most times, you're looking at a five-year window.
So they just, it's a stupid question. They just go bad? I mean, they just, they don't protect? Is that what happens?
They would still work, but you don't want to be held to civil liability.
The company's not, the company's not going to stand by the product beyond the shelf life. The ceramic plates or the metal plates, are those issued?
We're going ceramic.
Yeah, how many of those? Yeah, how many of those, are you issuing those out as well?
Yep. And they are actually, Lawman's, we already started coming in with them, they come with the plate. So the carrier is front and rear for the spine. Those metal ones get heavy. My old vest probably weighed about 50 pounds. So when you're talking about doing the Pope hat or something like that, wearing a vest that heavy, it's tough. So we went to a lighter vest, went to ceramic plates. And some of my staff have vests that go under their shirts that are a little thinner, the level is a little higher. Penetration is about the same, just costs a little more. So the ones that I have and some other folks went ahead and got them so we could wear them under suits or under our shirts. But everybody else patrol people who carry the ARs and want the pouches and all those attachments to it, their tactical vests blend well with their uniforms. We're moving to where everybody's going to wear during the day. You will see these uniforms on all our staff. So that's where we're going.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate the invitation. I've tried it twice and so that fourth Thursday, I recommend it highly. Some good turkey barbecue and some other things out there. I paid my visit by and appreciate it, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Anytime, last Thursday of the month, this time we're doing fish and shrimp, the last Thursday of the month. Last time we did chicken, turkey barbecue and all that, Family Living Violence Free and other agencies came, but anybody is welcome to come. We build relationships.
We would like to invite you back to Sheriff in December for a quarterly report on our metrics and the crime stats and see where we're at and the progress you're making and where the most, where the most difficult areas in the county are and where the ones not so difficult. So thank you.
Four-wheelers, four-wheelers, four-wheelers. Yes, sir. All right. We got to look at that. Thank y'all.
Sheriff, I'd like to say, y'all look mighty good in the blue.
Somebody told me stop losing weight, so I don't know.
It made some of them look smaller than larger. Y'all look good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, moving on into our agenda. Planning Board, page 143. Apologize, Board. To make appointments from the Planning Board. Planning Board serves the pleasure of Grandville County Commission, reviews and makes recommendations to the governor and body. The terms of Howard Tyler, District 4, and Justin Milstein, District 7, expired in July 2023. Mr. Milstein has resigned and Mr. Tyler retired after 28 years of service to be replaced. There are no application files. Do any commissioners at this time for District 4, Commissioner Kozart or District 7, Commissioner Gooch, have anyone at this point that you'd like to nominate?
Mr. Chairman, I'm so happy that after several attempts, I'm happy to recommend Cynthia Green, known as Nadine, 4189 Shock Overton Road, to be a member of our Planning Board.
Commissioner Kozart has nominated Ms. Green. Do I have a motion?
Second is motion.
Commissioner Karen and second by Commissioner Williford. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Jay, sorry. My right side of my ear and aid is not working too well tonight, so I apologize. Guy is going to speak up. Thank you, move on to the next one, is that good, Ms. and Clerk? The next one is Parks, Greenways and Recreation Committee, we're trying to find a member. At this point, does anybody have anyone to nominate there? We've got Wayne Hudson, District 2, and Ms. Howard expired. Hudson and Ms. Howard do not wish to be appointed. We have an at-large seat vacancy along with District 2. Do we have any nominations?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any. I have made a couple inquiries and again, as you've said several times, if there's any citizens interested in serving on these boards, please feel free to go by and pick up an application and turn it into the county office. At this time, I don't have a nomination.
And does anyone have an at-large recommendation? So we just be aware, commissioners, often we look at our districts, but we do have an at-large seat and so we'll work toward getting that filled. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We now have Senior Services Advisory Committee. We have Kathy Wolfert has resigned and needs replacing, District 2. Do we have any recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend the board appoint David Smith to fill the remaining term of Ms. Wolfert.
Mr. Williford has nominated David Smith to fill out the remaining term of Ms. Wolfert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gooch, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. County Manager, do you have anything for us?
No additional items tonight.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager, and thank you and your staff as always for all your hard work and thank you for staff members that are here tonight. I appreciate it. County Attorney, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of matters. One, economic development and one for personnel and I also have one matter on the agenda tonight for your consideration. This is a contract with Mobile Communications of America for Vesta 911 system support and that is a contract that was entered into several years ago, but is on a non-automatic renewal basis and it's something that under the previous policies that were being followed was not brought back to the board on an annual basis. Mr. Brummett brought this to the attention of the county manager and I, we reviewed it and agreed that it should be brought to the board. This is necessary connectivity issues to run the 911 system. It includes backup software and phone connectivity and this is something that we will be doing on a statewide contract starting next year, I believe, is that correct, Mr. Brummett? And so what this is, just continuing an arrangement that's been in place for several years now. The annual cost is $66,961.68 and this is something that is approved by the 911 Board, all the funds are provided through 911 funding and we're bringing it to you just to meet the county purchasing and contracting requirements. Anything you'd like to add?
Just that, as he stated, next year, we'll be going to a hosted system through the state. So this contract will be going away and what the state does then is they actually pay for this directly and it doesn't come to the center. So they kind of take it out of our hands. So we're moving toward a hosted platform.
And if I'm correct, County Attorney, the funding is there from the 911 fund collection?
That's what I'm told.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Gooch and second by Mr. Jay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brummett. We'll move now to commissioners' comments. Is that, just give me one second. Mr. Wren, I just want to make sure that you'd covered everything you wanted to cover for open session?
Open session, yes, sir.
But we are going to close session, correct? Commissioner Williford?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hemmen?
I just want to again thank the Extension Office for inviting us to their dinner. That was very exciting. And then we also went to the Cog Dinner and were able to see the recipients of the different awards. So that was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hemmen. Commissioner Kozart?
Yes, just like to say, I see Ms. Taisha Hewitt Hill from Social Services and just want to thank them. I know they have had some challenges, they were staffing and also as they approach dealing with the additional Medicaid clients, just let your team know, we're really counting on them and I know they'll do well. Also, just wanted to let the commissioners know, received a call from Commissioner Bryant from Halifax County and he was so impressed with the thought and process that went into our jail, they're looking at doing one and it was very gratifying to hear such nice comments about the appearance from the road and the functionality of our jail and just want everyone to know that that was appreciated by another county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. I too spoke with the gentleman and they were very favorable. Commissioner Karen?
Want to do a quick recap on the Quafford Extension. We heard from our Family Consumer Sciences Personnel this morning, Ms. Jennifer. Quafford Extension has a survey out right now and it's through Facebook and other types of things, it's on the Grandville County page. It's around farmer's market utilization, what people would like to see, just a three-minute, not even, two-minute survey, nine, eight, 10 questions. If you could fill that out, we have producers and consumers and the silos that we find ourselves in, many times it's difficult to get them broken down and we sure would like to be able to serve the people who want the product and the people who have the product to be able to distribute it to those in need. So, just want to take a quick minute to offer up Paul Westfall, one of our past executive directors of Quafford Extension, went home to the Lord and just want to mention him and how many people in this county he touched and just want to make sure that I say that he was something to behold while he was here. That's all I have.
Anyone else would like to make a comment about that gentleman?
Yeah, and he made a point, it was so important to him to get around and spend time with his family and his grandkids. I was so impressed with that, he really made that a special priority and I'm just thankful that he was given some time to be able to visit with them and spend quality time. Real good man who gave a lot for this county.
Thank you, Dr. Kozart. Mr. Jay?
Also just like to say that he worked hard.
Yeah.
While the time he was up in Gabriel Town. And he was really a great man and gave a lot and taught a lot of young families. And he represented us well in the state.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for those comments. Commissioner Gooch?
Just want to thank our state representatives and our state senator again for all they've done for us in legislature and this budget, bringing home a lot of funding for the county, a lot of much-needed funding. Also, I want to thank the county manager for his listening series that he started up and look forward to continuing with that and look forward to a lot of interaction with citizens in various parts of the county. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. Commissioner Jay, go ahead.
Does Butner have a festival this weekend?
Oh, I forgot to mention that the Lord Grandville Agricultural Heritage is having their weekend in Butner. I'm glad you reminded me. Thank you. And that starts to Friday and goes through Saturday.
Commissioner Jay, I'm going to get it right tonight, I'm looking right at you, so I'm going to watch your lip, but for whatever reason, this side has not been working tonight. And I'll have to check with my audiologists on that, but it's your turn.
Okay. Thank you. The first thing I would just like to say, thank you to each and every one of you that came up to Cog banquet. It really made my heart feel good to see y'all there supporting me as my outgoing as chairman. Also, just like to say to, I went to, you know, Johnson Cunningham was at Stitch's office. Her mother, I went to her mother's funeral Saturday and, you know, she was a big fan of stitching off with quilts and making different stuff like that. Anyway, she was 99 years old and I went to the funeral Saturday. And also, talking about that 5310, vans counted? One counted, Frank encountered. It's trying to get some kind of funds to do the same thing that we have here in Oxford as we had during the, tried to do in the lawyer in the county. They're trying to do it, trying to find funds for them to do it, but Cock is welcome. Anytime you can do, you can run a program like that, like that pit 310 to run around in Oxford. We try, we got, we got open arms, try to help. Now, on to that, anybody, we tried to, we've been doing something like 765 jobs, I mean, running trips every day. We run back and forward to, I call it Revlon, every day bringing people to work. We have a young lady that don't have driver license, that lives in Oxford. We take to the postal service every day, take her and pick her up. We only, we don't only do stuff like that, do dialers, but we do a lot of things that people say, all you have to do is pick up and pick up phone call and call. We appreciate all the things we do and we have a new director that is doing a marvelous job, finding us funds and everything to keep us going.
Thank you, Mr. Jay, for a full report, I appreciate it. Adam McConnell with the Grandville Health, would you mind coming forward, please, sir? It's kind of an impromptu invitation, but one of the concerns being that we went through was how we're going to better our EMS. And I understand that the hospital board approved or are working on BLS.
Yes, sir.
Could you just kind of give us a rundown on that?
Yeah, so we are, we just discussed our last Board of Trustees meeting, how we're going to provide BLS transports for patients at the hospital, also for our skilled nursing facilities. So we have, we've had some issues that we're working on here lately, trying to get patients who are sitting in the weekend, maybe getting discharged on Friday from the ED and having to wait through Monday. So we've got a budget put together and some capital dollars set aside for this coming year and we're working on a pro forma of what that's going to cost us this coming year. We think it's a doable plan, we think we can find staff, it's going to take about two staff members, it's going to take a couple of vans for us, but we think we can get it done, hopefully by the first of the year.
I mean, if the public recall, we had some work to do on our ordinance and we were looking at a private firm coming in and the hospital has come forward with a BLS solution. We're appreciative of that. That means for the public is, as the BLS is working, it provides more real war wagons available for ALS treatment, so that's beneficial to us.
Yep, be completely separate from our 911 services.
Right, okay. Thank you for the update, I think that's valuable to the citizenry, know that we're working on solutions. Appreciate that. October 7th in Butner at the Army, there's going to be a Veterans Health Fair. I hope all will attend, it's going to be a pretty robust event. Just an update here, over the last three years, our representatives have assisted along with our lobbying efforts of obtaining $90 million for Grandville, right at $90 million for Grandville County. That's substantial. That includes monies for Segwasa, that includes monies for our hospital, so that's substantial investments in the Grandville County over a three-year period of time. Whereas, we're working on making sure that we work with CAMPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for roadways for certain parts of the southern part, particularly of Grandville County. And we're, Mr. Baker, along with the county manager, working on getting the documentation prepared and presented to CAMPO for a Highway 56 study from Butner through Franklin, Franklinton, just to see where we're at and what some things we need to do as the traffic grows. Tended the school truck day and that was pretty impressive, the kids always loved it. They love going out there and seeing all the different, our goal is, if anyone in the audience could help us, is we're really working on getting a helicopter there next year. But these are things that really work with our kids and inspire them to occupations, which better our community. National Night Out tomorrow night, SWORD, everyone, I think one in Creedmore, one in Oxford. Oxford, isn't that tomorrow night, or Tuesday night? Am I right?
Butner, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So just make sure everyone takes time to go to those if you can. Again, the town halls, county manager, thank you for agreeing to do that, I think it's important that we get out and get the message of the county, it's important, I don't think anyone on this board has any problems at all with the tough questions that need to be asked in areas that we need to improve upon, hearing from the citizenry where we can improve, and at times when we're doing things very well, the opportunity to let the public know what we're doing. Bobby Wheeler, at the COG, was recognized as the Municipal Leader of the Year, and that was quite an accomplishment for Mr. Wheeler, Mayor Wheeler, and so I'm glad to see he got that recognition. And Mr. Jay, thank you for your service as the Chair of the COG, clearly a passion of yours, it was a pleasure to see you lead the event the other night, and thank you for your hard work beyond what this board does. Many of the commissioners on this board work on other boards to further programs on behalf of the county, and that is one that does the COG Council of Government, so thank the CAR-Tar Council of Government, so thank you, Commissioner Jay. With that, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session.
If we get a bio break.
Yeah, we will. Was it my first motion, Mr. Gooch? Mr. Kozart, second by?
Second.
Mr. Jay? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. I'm checking my thing right now. Motion to go back into open sessions?
Make a motion.
And a second? Williford and Kozart, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Certainly.
Second?
Aye.
Williford and Hemmen, all in favor?
Aye.